Should make it better.
I didn't see anything on that.
Well, just one guy coming in.
I have to say, I did not check the minutes this time.
Alright.
I didn't.
Let's turn this on.
Good situation.
There we go. Give me one second, Jane.
Okay.
See, this is what happens when you don't come to the meeting in person. I don't know if Dave can hear me. Can you hear me? You're on mute. You want cookies, you have to show up.
I don't get cookies, you mean?
Alright.
We'll talk and move. Hey, David, girl. Are we on mute?
No, he's on, he's up now.
David, are you there?
He goes back. I'm here.
Yeah, you should come down tomorrow morning. Down to the town pound at eight AM. Facilities in the eye are going to cut that baby out tomorrow, make it visible again.
Nice.
Right, we don't want to lose that important historical landmark. Somebody put a brass plaque on it. So I noticed, I've been noticing this fall how grown in it is. We're gonna, we're gonna give her a little haircut tomorrow.
Nice.
I wanted you to know we're showing your roads of love.
These are not clues.
Now you're talking.
Yeah.
Alright, I need one copy and then, or you've got the minute book. Did you sign them all? There was a pile on me. And I'll take the minute book back.
They're chocolate chip this week, Eric.
Ah. Here are. If you haven't gotten a copy of the school plans. Here's the plans for the school. And the question is simple. We can get some answers quickly. Last one's coming in. Okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna go with this stack.
Yep. Okay, so are you ready to open, Jane?
Yes, I'm ready to open.
Alright, so we're calling the meeting to order. On this stormy night.
Oh my God, I can't even.
The next time we meet, it might be snow.
Yes. No.
I've got it on the screen bigger.
This is too small.
Oh, come on.
I know, but you know, Eric's the only one of us under sixty.
The uh.
I might just look good for my age.
Let's see, where do I want to go? I don't know if I can get there now. I don't want to share that. I don't think it's gonna let me minimize that. Hold on, uh, can't minimize that. Hold on. Uh, let's see where is the desk dog? Well, that's the best I got for you right there. We can blow it up a little bit, but it is what it is.
What is our question about this though?
There is less than one thousand square feet of new space being built to the Plainfield School. And they are getting ready to move through their process and their question is, their read of the regs are that. They do not need site plan review. And they, but they want to, you know, show respect to the planning board. And make sure you guys feel the same way. So the addition is this area right here. Right, that.
No, that's existing.
No, that's existing. This area, that area right there is the addition. And so the Skype plan review regs say for additions of. One thousand feet or greater. And this is less than a thousand square feet.
So you're telling me that for one point five million, they're not even getting a thousand square feet?
Well, there's fair amount of renovation inside the building.
I hope so.
Uh, but I'm, yeah, I'm not advocating.
Words out of my mouth.
That's just.
That's always, that's always been the plan. I mean, even when, when it was presented at the district meeting. It was not, there was not a big addition to it.
No, but they weren't, they were. Changing a lot of stuff on the inside. And not committing to updating the bathrooms.
What is the issue?
Problem that I had for.
Is this that breezeway?
Uh, yeah.
Right there. And there's a little piece right there too.
So that's like a bump, it bumps out from the existing building.
And according to this plan, there's a potential to bump it out a little more.
Okay.
So this is the part of the school. There's the gym. And we're, we go out the door here and go into the bathrooms. But this is the area they're renovating. Some of the old addition, here's their new piece.
And the, and the lighter hatch marks, the L-shaped lighter hash marks at the top.
Yes.
Are the. Uh, the part that would be an addition at this point.
Are we getting this new part, the, the lower L to the left as well?
It is, you are, but that's external. That is, it's an outside patio area.
That's what I was, that's what I thought that was, but it's looks like it's marked the same way building space would be. On the other L.
Yeah, but it's not, that's not included in the square footage. The patio.
Probably no.
It's just the actual building. Well, I don't really think we need to do a site plan review.
Your call. I mean, I think it isn't, I mean, they would, the, the school board would do one if you want to do one. The architect rigs the regs and says, I don't think it qualifies, but we want to be respectful to the planning board.
I mean, they know what the regs are in terms of.
Well, there's acres of parking and what are you gonna change about the school? I mean, what, what are we gonna offer?
The only reason to, to. Get involved at all is if they had outside lighting and stuff that we needed to be concerned about.
Well, maybe under that. Overhang area, they might want lighting, but even whatever they put in there, it's gonna be dark sky compliant because it's covered.
Right. We'll remind you that in the email that says you don't need site plan review, but make sure all lighting is dark sky compliant.
Sure.
That's gonna be it.
I wish they were getting rid of that little like bump in. I wish they were just making it.
Well, for another million, they could.
Don't be such a smart animal.
Um, so is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we don't require a site plan review. Twelve seconds though. A possible favor.
I.
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 Okay.
Alright, and then, do we have any changes on the minutes? Did we say no?
I didn't, I didn't see any changes.
So the minutes approved as presented? I mean, they're pretty standard minutes, worked on the master plan, went all.
Right.
Um, okay, so then, let me stop this share. Um, and go to the next one. Uh, which is. I think, oh, that's not gonna do it. Go over here, back to here again. Come on, get rid of, get rid of the way, that's moving over here. Um, the energy chapter, which Evan is nice enough to.
Thank you.
Come tonight. Um, so I don't know how you want to proceed, Jane. I'll get this up on, on the screen. You, uh. You go ahead and however you want to proceed. We've got the energy chapter, Jane.
Right, so I mean, um. I mean, I think it was very well done. It's, um.
There was only one thing that I found on there. That I found confusing.
Okay.
What page was it on now? I had sent it in an email to you, Steve.
I can get it real quickly.
It was talking about the.
See, keep going.
New Hampshire has two, bless you, oil burning plant, coal burning plants. And then it goes on to say that. They were supposed to be decommissioned. So. If they were in fact decommissioned, then. I think we need to put in there that New Hampshire. Had had. Two oil plants or.
It's coal plants. It was coal plants. Coal plants and, um. One was in Bow. And the other is down in Merrimack. Um, they were supposed to be decommissioned over the next three years. But because of financial considerations, they're actually shutting them down this year.
So they are not in fact shut down yet. I just found that paragraph about that confusing, so.
I'm not sure exactly. Timeline that I read was that they'd be shut down. Essentially this year. Which would mean December, if I, but I, I, I don't know if that's a solid timeline. They all, I suppose, something. The one in Merrimack is shut down. The Bow is the one that was still running.
Okay.
Um, I thought that I had said that, but, um.
I did not bring my notes on that with me because I just. Once I send it to, yeah, once I send it to Steve, that's it.
Here's, here's what you said.
I downloaded.
That's what you said.
So yeah, page to the fourth bullet point. I think you're still on the first page.
You're looking for something you talked about.
Yep, you need to go back up.
Well, it says three.
Yeah, go back up, 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 up. Up, 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 okay, stop. Okay, see, New Hampshire has two remaining coal fire, fired power plants. Schiller at Portsmouth, Merrimack at Bow. Both plants were scheduled to be retired. But as of October twenty twenty five, New Hampshire no longer has any coal fire, coal fired power plants.
And that's badly worded, I agree. I thought I'd. Be more specific, but basically. Um. I should say, as of twenty twenty five. The operators are shut them down, so New Hampshire no longer has, I can add that.
Right. It's just, when I was reading, um, so one of the things that, um. Happens when I'm going through this stuff is that. You know this stuff cold. So this probably when you were writing it made perfect sense, but because I don't know. I was confused.
It was actually a little bit more complicated than that. When Ron reviewed it, he pointed out that, um. I was still saying that they were there. And it had to be changed, so I made a change on the fly without really thinking it through, but I, I'll, I can clarify that and give you another version.
That was the only thing that I found that, you know, I had any kind of.
I, I had a question about pagination, putting a page number at the bottom. Um, I don't know if you're, in your thing, you are paginating for each chapter or for what you're doing, so I did not put pagination on the pages. I could put that in.
I would prefer that.
Okay.
It makes it easier for us to comment.
Well, yeah, and I didn't put it in because I wasn't sure how to predict the rest of the document.
Every chapter is. Starts at one, right? Like we're paginating each chapter.
Okay, I'll make that change, that's easy.
Yeah, yeah. Eric's gonna be working on. Formatting all the different chapters so that they're all consistent.
Growth?
Yeah, I'll do that.
That's good.
Um, so, but I do, I do think it makes it easier. Um, for everyone to, when you're reading that.
Well, I, I agree, but I didn't want to do something that.
Yeah, no, no.
I can add that and I can.
So you got one that got dried out?
I don't think so, no. No, my face wasn't about the cookies, it was. I was in two different places.
Do you wanna, you say you want to go to the end of recommendations or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's probably where.
I mean, I keep wondering about that, yeah. Well. Yeah, it's in that table, it's.
Is it here?
A little bit higher, uh, yeah, okay, recommendations, and then the table contains the meat.
Do we want a bullet point else? Um, did we do that in the other chapters? For the, our number, um.
It's got in the table, in this case.
Well, we numbered recommendations in the, in the other tables, but, okay, um. And that's, we could scroll to the next page. So include this, okay. Is KUW's lighting already LED?
Mostly all KUW's lighting uses a light.
I know, but is it, have, are those fixtures all now using LED?
I think they're old enough, they're probably not.
Okay.
But I think it's amazing how much light they leave on at night throughout the campus. I would think they would care for themselves. Just because of the amount of money they must be spending.
So.
You see a change in, I need to make there. I said lit for level two chargers, they should be EV chargers.
They should be what chargers?
EV charging chargers.
So what was the, the microgrid? I, what, explain to me what a microgrid would be to.
Okay, the, the concept really, um. We were thinking in terms of Meriden. And the solar arrays that are in the vicinity from KUW, from the school, from the water plant. Um, if, that, that would be the big picture. Is that you would have a microgrid that would include all those, also include this building as an emergency response building. And in the case of an emergency. You would go to a microgrid that relied on solar and also some probably some form of storage. Okay, so battery storage. So you'd be able to run this part of the town. Um, essentially with renewable energy in the case of emergency. I mean, this is. It's a big, it's a, it's a big project to do this.
It would be.
It's, it's not something that, you know, it's gonna cost, you know, it's. Could be quite big. You'd have to get the Liberty Utility involved because they would have to install transfer switches, you know, to isolate it. In case there was a power loss. So there would be electrical work, so this is, um. And you'd have to have. Battery storage. Um, and really, it's, at this point, it's a nice to have. Um, in the future, we might have more failures than we have in now. I know that, I think Rod has a portable generator that he can move around town, doesn't he?
Who's that?
Um, not Rod, um.
Rich?
Um, but I thought the town had a portable trailer with battery store or some portable generator that you could move around on a trailer.
No, we have the ability to get them from the state if there was, if there was an emergency, but, um. I think the idea, you know, the microgrid has been talked about. You know, at, at some point, the gravel pit is likely to be a solar array, right? That'd be twenty seven acres of panels. That'd be quite a, quite a thing.
Well, if you've got a couple of million dollars to put in the connection.
Right, it's getting, you know, hopefully the, the lines would get upgraded and get to, up to twelve A would be quite so expensive, but. There is the potential to have large solar arrays on both sides of town, and we could, in theory. Provide electricity to the villages on our own if we didn't have a power supply at the time. I mean, I think having it in the master plan is a good idea because it plays into. At least under some federal administrations, there's been an interest in resiliency, you know, providing money for towns and to. To develop resiliency because of climate change. Um, the current administration doesn't care about those things, but the future ones will.
Are there any comparable sized communities doing this?
I don't know of anything in New Hampshire. I mean, I've seen it done for other states where there have been. And you have places like airports have microgoods in place, for instance, and then the battery backup or solar plus battery backup.
Yeah.
But, um. Don't know of anything in New.
I mean, as much as anything, the battery backup is an obstacle. It's a, it's a, you, you need a lot of battery.
Um, yeah. Depending what battery you're using, battery technology is changing.
Right.
I mean, there are iron air batteries now that are coming into play. Which can give you very long, um. Support, I mean, talking about a week or more of support. Without having to recharge. So, but again, so. Technology's changing. It could be that when we design this, the batteries wouldn't be as much of a problem. But yes, you would need a fair amount of battery support to make sure that, you know, when sun's not shining.
I mean, one of the things I think we discover every time there's a natural disaster. Is how dependent we really are. I mean, the Upper Valley doesn't survive nor any other part of the country very many days on its own. Right? There's just not enough food. There's not enough, you know, heating supplies and, and gas and. You know, the things that, that energy committees aren't necessarily wanting right now, but the reality is, if we had some kind of a natural disaster in, in. In, um, April or in March rather, February, there isn't. I was shocked to learn there's not enough heating oil in the Upper Valley to keep people warm for more than three days. Just, there, there's no tanks that are that big. They, that we would, I mean, that's probably getting better because more people are moving to heat pumps. But if the electric grid's down, they're, they're not getting it, you know, and what does most people have? And they have some kind of a propane generator. And I think Mike can explain from his experience, those things eat propane. I mean, they, they, they do it at a big level, so the, I mean, we. It, it, it's shocking how dependent we are. We begin to be freeze and starve in just a couple of days. It's just, most people, not everybody, but some. And, and the town's not that well suited to take care of people any longer than they are in their own homes, right? If we, if we, if we did not have power in some way.
Right. Want to go down further?
But I think the microgrid's a great one to have in there for, for, for the future, for grants and all sorts of things.
Now, some of that stuff, I, the energy committee has been doing over the years, particularly their weather, weatherized campaigns to. Talk to people about how to weatherize, how to utilize the, um. Insulation in their homes, and we would continue to do that. Yeah, there's a. I mean, each kind of. You understand what is meant by an EV expert?
I think they're the ones you guys have been having, right?
Right, I mean, they've been had around the Upper Valley every, every year, basically, come and show EVs to people.
Right, right, yeah.
I guess my concern is like, this is a, there are a lot of recommendations, and if we were like tasked at some point. To produce a demonstration that we were. Working on these initiatives. It would be a tall order because there's so many.
Yeah, well, a lot of them though are ongoing. It's not like a new, they're not new initiatives. They're things that are. Currently already happening.
Some of these were in the two thousand ten plan as well.
Right, right, right.
I do agree with Eric though, that this, these recommendations seem overwhelming. There's a lot there. Not that they aren't all good ideas, but there's a lot there to take in.
Uh huh.
Well, it's also a way, there is a lot, there are a lot there, but it's a way of getting people to think about things that they wouldn't otherwise think about.
Yeah.
Um, the, the one that I'm, uh, have a little hesitancy about is back up at the top, there's a blue paragraph that's added.
About converting everything to electrical.
Yeah, yeah, and. And I, that, that strikes me as. Not a town. Recommendation. I mean, we've got so much in it already. And I. You know, I'm, I'm not sure that it belongs in the, in the local master.
Yeah, that's a long term goal.
Sure, but, but a lot of people would, 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 will react to that as. Overkill, so to speak, and maybe not, I don't. Maybe that's me. Um.
No, I know, it's, um. It's a big goal. And I put that in because that's the way I think we're going. You know, I'm thinking. Ten, well, twenty years probably ahead. This is in terms of this type of goal, so.
Right, which is. Correct, really.
But I, I can see people saying, whoa, what do you mean, you know, taking away all my. Propane and etc, etc.
Right, what is the thing I keep seeing on the ads? Did New York State outlaw? Propane stoves? Can you not buy a propane stove? And they just.
Oh, there's some history to that. Um, there was a study done that indicated that gas stoves are not propane stoves.
There.
Actually, I think it included propane stoves, but natural gas and propane stoves.
Never quite understood the difference, but I know what you mean, yes.
Um, natural gases, but anyway. That using those inside your home actually creates, um. You know, I mean.
Pollution inside your house.
Pollution inside your house, basically.
Which you're living with and breathing right in the confines of your own house.
And so that led to a recommendation by some national organization, it's the loose recommendation that people move the electric stoves. You know, the induction cooktop, for instance, which is very efficient. And then it's just an electric, um, hubbers.
Yeah.
Um, so that's probably what you've been seeing, and that, that led to a reaction of people saying, you're taking away my gas stove.
Right, right. No, it's just, it's humorous to see the ads. I mean, it's, it's, but it's.
I absolutely hate cooking on an electric stove.
You wouldn't hate, you wouldn't hate.
Try the induction heat top, you could.
I, I have not, but I really like my, my propane stove.
Is the induction one the one that's practically?
I really do.
It's cold to the touch?
Essentially, yes.
Essentially, yes. It uses magnetism. To, to heat the pan and, and we just got one, so I could speak from experience.
Okay.
So are you happy with that?
I'm very happy with it.
Yeah.
It has very fine control like a propane stove. I mean, that's what I think cooks like about propane.
Well, uh, yes, well, it has more control than propane by far, and it heats. The entire bottom of the pan evenly, which propane does not. Um, and particularly if you have a stove like our old one where the flame was up on one side, down on the other, and that kind of stuff, um. Which is why we got rid of it, but, but, um. It, it cooks faster, it cooks better. I can boil a quart of water in like. Forty-five seconds, a minute, maybe?
That's fast.
The media's at Mike's house, he's making sauce.
We, we also have induction cooktop, and we've had it now for probably three years, and we've other.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure I was going to, but I do like it.
I would be totally willing to go to an electric oven. If I could have my propane on the top and.
Well, you want induction on the top, it sounds like.
A hybrid.
Only if I can continue to use my cast iron pans.
Well, that's, no, that's okay, because the induction requires you to have essentially iron or something of iron, incandescent steel or something like that. You can't have, you can use aluminum, for instance.
Yeah, you can move your iron pans as long as they have a flat bottom.
Yeah.
But if they have a ring around the edge of it to keep it off the stove, like the old ones do, that doesn't work.
Won't touch anymore.
Their stove.
We've probably diverged.
Yeah, okay.
A minute, but it's a good, no, it's a good conversation. Well, it's. Because I think the, the way people. To Mike's point about whether, you know, big government should be telling people what to do, and maybe people would read this is, is our long-term goal. The best way to get people to convert is to, to things is to find, that they find that it's in their interest. You know, it saves them money or they like it better. It's an improvement, and then they just go running to buy them, whereas, you know, where. And so, I mean, I think the heat pump thing, clearly folks. And they may or may not be using them for the right reasons, but there's a heat pump explosion. And, and, you know, you can go everywhere now in the country, the most rural places or the most urban places, heat pumps hanging off everybody's house.
Yeah, and, but it was interesting, the statistics you had about the number, like us who are. Using heat pumps, but we also have propane backup and, you know, that kind of stuff.
Right, right, right.
I mean, as much as we sometimes complain, and we do, because we're people. Um, this building here, there is no backup and the only thing that keeps it warm. Um, this building here, there is no backup, and the only thing that keeps it warm or cold or cool. Is the are the heat pumps, and for most things, it works very, very well. The extremes are difficult. Particularly the extremes in the cold, not so much the heat, uh but we don't even. We have no backup, it is what it is, and there and we've lived now for through some pretty cold winters. You know, with it, it's been a surprising number of years already that we've had the heat pumps in there. Um, and the best thing about them is you don't have to worry at Christmas. Whether somebody's brought you fuel oil before you close up the place or not, is the building gonna freeze up while you're gone, right? Because the old one used to just crank through the heating oil in dead winter, and and nobody comes because nobody has to come.
Yeah.
It is, uh, so they've been nice from that perspective. Uh, so I can see a lot of houses in town benefiting from it, and 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 all, I mean, we are. But that's happening because people's neighbors are talking to each other, saying, oh my god, you can't believe this thing, and and then they buy one.
So do you want me to take that paragraph out? I mean, it's.
If we were to modify the verbiage just a little bit. Like, the long term goal for the town should be setting the example of electrifying. Our transportation.
True.
Instead of um.
Should be.
You wanna copy? Evan, do you do you need to write notes, or you you, your mind is a steel trap?
Well, no, I think the moment it's only three things I have to worry about.
Well, you'd be at my limit now.
Would something like that change your concerns, Mike? Having the having it be phrased as a town setting as a sample rather than saying that everybody's.
I'm not sure it changes it much, but I I'm not, you know, this is, I'm not gonna follow in the sword.
Right, okay.
I mean, the thing that is interesting to to Eric's point is that, you know, the land use chapter, the housing chapter. Um, six recommendations, you know, six things to work on. Now, maybe what this says to people who look at our master plan in ten years from now, because it'll be at least that long, they they'll they say, wow. In Plainfield, climate change and and climate change related issues, energy issues were were the big deal in two thousand. You know, twenty-five, and so, because it's it's clear, you know, I mean. There are more goals and objectives here than there are in any other chapter by a factor of two.
Right, but that that's okay. I don't think I don't think there's an issue with that, they don't, you know, some of the chapters don't really have a lot of goals.
But the historic resource chapter, it's the goals, the goals are, it's to get older, that's the goal.
All right, well, let's go screen back up, I just I'm just wanting to look at all the um.
Where do you want to go?
I was trying to look at the grass and wondering.
You want to go all the way to the top, or go all the way down?
Wondering if if all those. I think that's an important, an important one. By the way, I was wondering about some of the others, whether they all. So it's twenty-one pages is that chapter, right?
This stuff is kind of interesting, and a place to go find it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
In reality, people, a whole lot of people are gonna look at the grass rather than reading the verbiage too.
True, yeah, it's true.
I would be guilty of that. I love grass.
Okay, that's good information.
My way, go back up. Monthly usage is six hundred what?
Must be K W.
K W, okay.
Okay, I'm missing a um.
A unit. I mean, so here you might put dollar sign, here it's got K W, so I think the people would go and maybe over here, a K W.
Yeah, okay. So that's how some electricity.
That's good, yeah.
Wait, sorry, can you scroll up a little bit more to the one we were just looking at?
Right.
Let's scroll back. So is electricity electricity rates, June twenty cents per kilowatt or per K W? Cents per, so twenty-three, is that a dollar now? Twenty-three dollars or fifty?
Yeah, I think he was gonna add dollar there, dollar to the next one, and then and then kilowatts up above to the.
But it's just that it says cents.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, that's that's how they do it, cents.
Uh, right, that should be.
But it's.
But the decimals are either in the wrong place or.
Saying it's.
I think that they that need, that actually is a cent.
Yeah.
It's twenty-three cents, there is not.
So the decimal should be before the two, right?
No, because.
It says cents per kilowatt hour.
It's half a cent. It's like twenty-three whole cents and then point five one of that.
Okay, but you're saying it is, if there were a dollar sign there, then the decimal would have to move, but because there isn't a dollar sign. It's the s- the 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 format is twenty-five cents, twenty twenty-five cents.
Yeah.
And so that's twenty-three cents.
Twenty-three and a half cents.
Right, per kilowatt.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Yeah, I need to, I I think the the two columns on the middle and the end.
Okay.
Is is Plainfield as in the whole town or?
It's the whole town.
The whole town?
Yeah, that's good, interesting.
These are numbers from C P C Nature Records, and that's what.
Okay, okay.
And we would expect that because at this, at least in the beginning, the co-op was was already less expensive. Because it wasn't an election, it wasn't a utility, it was a co-op.
And then we have not tried to convert people from the co-op because our rates have been comparable to theirs, in fact, now are more expensive.
Right.
One of the things I've always enjoyed, Evan, or or noted is that. As much as you would do it for other reasons, you have acknowledged that the the reason most residents would change to community power was. Because of the rate, to save money, you know, I mean, the the money, it's not because they wanted seventy percent green power. Or or whatever, it's because they could save thirty dollars a month or or whatever it happens to be, and so I think it's, you know. It's getting harder to make that, you know, it's getting harder now because the rules changed, the way community power works, and so. Change more favorably for the other guys.
Yeah, unfortunately, that was a long graph, which is why I went that way, but it's it's not ideal, but.
And I would, if I had my little controls here wherever they went, I don't quite understood, I'd rotate it much.
Yeah.
How do you heat your home if you use more than one source? Provide percentage.
Yeah.
So eighty percent of the town, looks like at the time this was done, was fuel on?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
This is the twenty-three, twenty-one survey, which I think I put in there, but. The all these survey numbers for twenty twenty-one.
Okay. So do you think we can, if you think it can be flipped, Evan, or?
Uh, not if you want to press the page.
Okay.
It will not be readable if you try and make it a, turn the vertical, horizontal to vertical.
You could you could split the graph and put it in two sections, but that would be. Um, notice I said you could do that, I don't.
Um, I would do it if you're basically you snip and you put the snip in your.
Yeah, I understand, that's what I do too.
Beyond that, you know.
And would that be the the latest data you can get is twenty-one?
No, that comes from that survey, but in terms of where do you get that data otherwise for the town, I don't know if we have that data.
Right.
From that survey. And I have to tell you that in terms of the validity of the survey, we got essentially a nine percent response. We don't understand counting uh households as the, you know, respondent.
Wouldn't um Michelle have a way in terms of registration of cars? Is there a way to know how many of them are electric vehicles?
I I asked her and she said no.
And she wouldn't know the other pieces, right? She wouldn't know, people wouldn't have told her how much they drive their car.
Right. But I'm just thinking.
And we were we registered an E V or two a day, and there was one today, I know, I saw it, it was it, so.
I'm actually surprised that we can't tell that because the. The the tax on the E Vs is an excellent good edit, you know.
Right.
But she said she couldn't.
Right, well, the other thing she runs into is there's a lot of privacy information, you just can't get the information, you just, you know, she's not even allowed in theory to look up a registry. A plate number, she has the capability to, she can do it, but as a clerk, they're not supposed to.
No.
Tell them, tell people much about that stuff.
Okay.
Um, they get into trouble.
Yeah, so I mean, if only there was only a nine percent response to that survey, then I would question whether that graph is even.
Nine percent is actually usually good for surveys.
Well.
We didn't get much more than that for the town survey, well, what'd we get? We got three hundred fourteen percent, I know, we got we got more than that, did we?
I thought it was in the twenties.
It was in the twenties, was it really?
Because I think like twenty is the threshold for statistical significance. Like, that's like technically, I think, the baseline for a substantial certain response.
I thought we got like three twenty-something for responses.
Yeah, but we only have.
Twenty-five hundred.
We only have twelve hundred households.
Yeah. But you've got multiple responses from.
Yeah, some households, but you you take away the children under eighteen, you know what I'm saying? No, I mean, I, so that's I just, that's just a question, if 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 they were, if it was that small sample.
Yeah, when I had looked into that, I dropped the impression that nine percent was not unreasonable for my survey.
I think for response rate, it's a good response rate, but as far as data.
Validative.
Yeah.
What does this pie graph say, Evan? Electric vehicle ownership. Seventy-one for nine, just so there's ten percent of the town says they have an electric car?
Yes, and seventy percent are considering buying one. As of twenty twenty-one.
So, right.
So are are you thinking, Jane, that we should not be including the rest that were created to the survey information?
That's what I'm just asking the question, I mean.
I don't know that I consider the information that we're getting from it irrelevant.
Right.
I don't know, because it tells the whole story, but.
Yeah, I was just wondering how accurate, you know, if.
Yeah, well, so. Having it in there does imply that it represents the whole town. So the numbers represent the whole town.
That's true of all surveys, so I assume that from a, you have a statistical sampling and whether.
Well, there might be, maybe it going up, scrolling up when you talk, when you start up a survey, you could say nine percent. Respond, you know, this this reflects nine percent who responded to the survey.
I can put that in?
Yeah, so that it doesn't, yeah, so that it there's a little bit of a disclaimer there that this may not really be.
Or or you could read it either way, I mean, from Evan's perspective, folks could read it and say, that's a good response, and I like that data, or. You could say, I I I know that it's, that it is only ten percent.
Right.
When I say nine percent, that's responses uh divided by another household. So. Yeah.
Nine percent of twelve hundred households.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, I just, I I guess I'd feel better if there was some kind of, just a quick sentence of kind of explaining the responses to the survey so that. People don't overinterpret the responses because. All right, what's this?
That's a, basically, from N H saves, uh, this shows you how the. N H saves page looks if you actually go up there. If you're looking.
So if you went and put the data in, it would give you a dashboard that looks something like that?
Yeah, give gate basically, yeah. And if you're in the red, they'll pay you money, if you're in the green, they won't, essentially.
Okay. I think it's great to have all the links and the um.
Surprised the wind is as close to solar as it is.
We had some larger wind systems, we have a lot of small solar, we don't have a lot of.
Big solar.
Solar arrays, I mean, you know, you're limited to five megawatts anyway, there are not many of those around, you have a lot of little.
And what limits it to five? I mean, is that just be, is it infrastructure that limits it or regulation?
It's regulation that's at five.
I mean, the one that just got approved in Plainfield is essentially one, right? So it could be five times that.
But I've heard from developers that five is, but being three and five is the sweet spot. For installing solar arrays. I mean, you go into utility class arrays, you're getting much bigger ones than that. And we don't have, I think, we might have one or two utility sized arrays.
That's so those are the things when you see out west in the big flat deserts and they go on for acres.
See a lot of those in Texas. But I.
Okay.
And that just shows a cost of, current cost of generation. That was basically taken from the previous plan, didn't change that.
Uh huh, uh huh.
Where are these quotes from?
That's directly from the old method, two thousand ten plan. Uh, and also some of that is actually uh. Regulations that need to be followed, that towards the top, the actual R S A.
Is that why they're in the boxes and and highlighted by color?
That's basically, I copied that from the previous plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we should cite, maybe say that, like in the bottom. Yeah, just like, note, yeah, because I think people are gonna wonder why it's uh, same, you know, highlighted.
This box seems more like it's in the goals and recommendations rather than or have we gotten to that section?
We're getting close.
Some of the major items that appear to need attention in the near future are, I mean, that's what a goal is.
And again, I can remove that if you feel it's not uh useful.
Well, we're still repeating those in in the goals and recommend, aren't we?
I don't think those are in there.
These seem like bigger picture, like kind of big picture, and then the goals are.
This is like a big picture thing. This body is kind of big picture and what's.
I mean, I think what this is saying is these are the areas that we think the the site plan review and master plan are not, some division regulations, zoning regulations should address that are not currently being addressed.
But does it belong in the energy chapter?
Well, I think they're saying these are the things that would help energy consumption, reduce energy consumption.
I think that needs to go into the goals, recommendations part rather than the body of the chapter.
Is there anything in in the in any of the graphs that talks about heat pumps and the increased use of his heat pumps in the community?
And it was one of the graphs, it does look, I mean, the one that talks about how you heat your home.
Okay.
As he pumps in there. That's the only, I mean, I recommendations, obviously, we should encourage people to move to them.
Right, but I think the fact that we have, the requires a building permit, right?
Yes.
So we could cite that, that that, you know, there've been X number of heat pumps installed in residences in the last five, you know, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty five, X number of heat pumps, and we encourage.
If I could get Ben's numbers, I'd be happy to put them in.
I will have to see if we can core, they're considered a fixture in the uh, and so I can't, and there's lots of, but we we will look and see if there's a way to query that out. That it's that it's, there's lots of things I think that fall in into heat pumps, but he may use a particular code for those.
Okay, let me, I just think
Yeah.
That's we see people using it more and more people adapting it.
Oh, there's no question.
That would be great.
We should reflect that, you know, saying that we've seen an increase in heat pump installations, you know, in the community and.
I mean, there's no question that Plainfield as a as a community. I mean, we could put, Evan has the numbers now. We could put the number of solar installs. I mean, Plainfield for.
Well, we have. The solar stores.
Is it, it's in there now. So so we could have, but I mean, it's it's clear, there's lots of interest in this stuff in Plainfield, just
Right.
From the makeup of our residents.
Right.
Uh, I think the hardest things to do is to get people of low and moderate incomes to be interested, and they might benefit the most. But they haven't got ten grand to spend on a heat pump, you know, it's just.
Right.
Or or, you know, I mean, Brad and as part of the water district upgrade, they're they're they, we may try to do, and it's a little bit out there still, but we may try to do a community block grant, which is using federal money. Plainfield's never done one uh using federal money, but to replace all of the water infrastructure to each of the units at the, in the Plainfield Trail Park. But part of that same work would also be weatherization underneath the trailers, which is generally horrible. Uh, and so that might help people, you know, get more comfortable living and 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 save a few dollars.
Even in general, you don't want to put heat pumps in unless you fairly well weatherize, because I I don't handle leaky buildings.
Right, they're not intended. I mean, Mark Rosenbaum always said, don't worry about what the motor is. Figure out a way to keep the air and the heat in the building. And, you know, worry about the motor later.
I've seen some emails recently about there being a program to help low income people get heat pumps. I haven't had the time to look into that in detail. I could investigate that further.
Okay.
It was one of those things on the back of my mind is a goal for.
Right.
I I don't know when that might end. It might be soon.
Well, that last um oh, we just lost it.
Go up.
The one about something about, go down, it was about encouraging large solar arrays in 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 lieu of taxes.
There was a pilot, I was recommending a standard pilot.
There, developing consistent payment in lieu of taxes.
Well, and in fact, the statute, you develop a standard one by by developing your first one, cause that whatever you do on the first one, you do on the next one until that. But and we we have, we don't have any active ones anymore. Bringing in power, the people that built the one down at the school, they the pilot runs out, right? They 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 didn't like their first pilot they got from the town. I mean, they agreed to it, and then they didn't like it later, cause it we felt like we were requiring them to pay too much, so we reduced it. Then it ran out because we increased the exemption big enough to so that it captures them. Except they never filed the exemption card to 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 make the solar exempt, so they just got themselves a four thousand dollar tax bill on that array. And the the reality is Hildum's not gonna recommend we do anything but tax them. They did not do what the law requires. The law requires you fill out an exemption form.
Right.
And so it just, the one at the school drives me nuts. It's the worst thing ever to come to Plainfield in terms of solar. It's just, it looks awful. And no one cares about it. No, even the people who own it don't care. I mean, it's it's just, it's it's a go to look at any of the other ones that are privately owned by the people who live on the site. They look so much different, and they're cared for so much differently.
So the the reason that I put that in is uh I've sat in a couple of meetings for both the school and also for the new array, where basically talking about how do we set up a pilot? And I mean, if you if you think that you actually have a standard that you can now follow.
Well, essentially what the selectmen did with the one megawatt one is that they are going to pay. Um, they're not gonna pay school tax, they're gonna pay the other two.
Right.
And and then it escalates because what they, what they want is consistency in knowledge, and so the base year, it's the school and town and county tax that develop, or town and county tax that developed the fee, and then it increases by an escalator the next years.
So there already is.
So you you consider that is your standard?
That is our plan at the moment. Yes, other selectmen could do a different plan, but right now, that's the one we got.
So I'll just take that that point out, because if you really have that, it's no point.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else?
But you guys put a lot of effort in. I mean, we know Dave Grove from the Conservation Commission is listening in, so we we know he now knows how high the bar is.
One of this is just stuff that I knew from working on the Energy Committee for a long time.
Right, right.
Or a new way to find the information.
Right.
It's well, it's well written.
It's very well written.
We're we're sitting here picking and poking a little bit, but it's very well done.
That's what you need to do.
But we're very fortunate in this town that we have committees that are willing to do part of this work so that we don't have to pay the um.
Knowing Evan that we can't get into a thirty minute discussion, cause we've got another whole section of the master plan to work on. Is there, is the future of community power getting clearer or murkier?
Um, I think it's getting clearer. The, I can tell you, it's pretty, almost complete certainty that this coming next year rates will still be higher for community power than they will be for utilities. Let's see, it's maybe, it's maybe, we're not sure what the P U C is gonna do, they might, there's a new P U C leader coming in. But our expectation is that we'll be above, not a whole lot above, but it'll still be up until the following year, people leave your people lot.
But but the intention is it will continue.
Oh, yeah, we have, uh, we just got into this agreement to build a essentially five megawatt array in Webster. Not Webster, Warner, I was getting that wrong. And so we basically are taking, buying recs from that, and we've actually guaranteed a certain amount of power be taken off. So we are.
As the rates have crept slightly above
Yeah.
utility rates.
Yeah.
Uh, as opposed to being significantly below them. Have you have you noticed any exodus of any significant numbers?
We actually had a member meeting last week, and at that member meeting, what they said was that most of the of the people leaving media power are people who moved elsewhere. And they haven't been reenrolled because we haven't done a refresh on on those people. So the people who live in Plainfield or whatever.
Right.
They go back onto default utility uh power. Uh, and that's because CPC H hasn't done a refresh to bring them back.
But the home stays in community power, right?
We have not seen in Plainfield, uh, we've seen very, very few people here.
Right.
It's been very strange.
But I mean, I think so far the the delta isn't enough to drive, people aren't managing their daily lives that well in terms of thinking about what their plans are, but it's, you know, Evan has this really impressive graph that he showed with the selectmen about how much money taxpayers saved in the first year or two years of community power, you know, on their electric bills. I mean, it's 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 a big chunk of change that is shrinking now because the, their rates are slightly higher than 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 electric company rates. Uh, and so it's, we're biting into that, but like most things, if you got in early and it was right, you made you made good money, and you saved good money.
We got in at a good time because we got in when rates were very high, and we were able to be very competitive at that time. You know, gas prices were high, natural gas prices were high.
In in the end this last year, I forget, did Cornish join or not?
No.
They did not.
Cornish, Cornish cannot join until rates get below utility rates. That's what all the plans that we have, all the, you know, uh, plans written for community power. That is a condition that the town cannot join unless the rate they get is below the utility rate. Doesn't mean to say once it goes above, you have to leave, but you cannot actually join.
Might have been Ross, I think.
Ross left.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
David, do you have any questions?
No, but thank you, Evan, and the Energy Committee for doing all that work. And it is a good example of what the Conservation Com- Commission uh should be thinking about for our chapter as well.
Okay.
Would you not enjoy a bit of a renaissance, a revitalization? You must be enjoying, I mean, Megan Chapman's a, she's a driver.
Yeah, I'm uh it's tiring me out.
All right, well, let's.
Uh, I should be, but I'm not. Should talk to you about putting some links in, because in the actual community knowledge section, I would just like to link.
Okay.
We had dessert.
What about you, where do you want some chocolate milk?
We want it, it's just.
No, I'm good, I'm good. I still have.
Something in it, then you'd have.
Yeah, well, you know.
This stuff would really start to fly. Yeah.
We'd have some real colorful language in this plane.
And Evan's asking if you're all set. I think we're all set.
Okay, I will say goodnight.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, God.
Well, there could be a lot of crap in the roads too. It's windy.
I know, yeah.
Whoops, I don't want that. I definitely don't want that.
He come down yesterday, which I wasn't expecting, or at least come down recently, you know, that.
Right.
So what I'm trying to figure out, this last letter that's on your uh, we just handed out, is essentially that the plant, you can't blame them, the Regional Planning Commission saying, is there anything else you want us, any graphics that you want us to update, any any displays, any whatevers? Tell us now so we can work on them. And so I'm trying to figure out the best way to do that, I think, is to go to the master plan and scroll through every chapter.
Of the new, the new chap, the chapters we have, the new chapters.
Or the old ones, I think, cause that's what they're working from.
Right, but they've already updated a lot of those.
Right, so we'll know, I mean, I I'm I'm asking how you want to answer this question, and so I can, I can uh.
I mean, we've already, they've already updated a number of them.
I'm, what does she say? She says, I have started working on updating the master plan chap- chapter data and maps. I'd like to get some specific specifics from you through about what else needs updating for the maps. I have found updated conserve protected land in road data from New Hampshire granite. So I just don't know what to tell her until you tell me what to tell her.
Okay, how many times are we gonna say, tell them what we want? Well, we, that's what I'm feeling like.
Right, well, but I think the flip of it is they're saying, we're working on your plan right now. If you've got something, if the answer is that's it, then 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 we're done. But if if we want them to do something else, they're asking them to 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 tell them. So I thought we would go through the existing chapters and just look at graphics. And say, we've updated that graphics and we 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 know we've done that one.
Right.
We we don't, and it, and I think what you're looking for is just anything you want added or changed that's significant, right? It's not, I mean, you can say we don't want that graph later, we can just pull it out. But it's it's the ones that you think that they want.
All right, let's go through it.
Data too. Well, and the only way I think to do that is to go through the
It can't be fifty nine out, is it really?
No.
Not anymore, that was the daytime, right?
Let's see, dot forms and is Dave still there? Did he stay? I want to share this then when I get there. So do you think there's anything in his, let me share the screen with Dave and then he can see.
So we haven't uploaded any new chapters yet, right?
No, so this.
Okay, so, I mean, do you, are there things in historic?
No.
There's not. Okay, natural resources they're working on.
Right.
Housing, I'll take one quick look there.
Yeah, I think they've updated that.
Yeah, we told them to update that.
So economic base, that's one that's on their list, I think.
Just scroll through and see what graphics are there. I don't. Yeah, I apologize, but I didn't go through every chapter.
I didn't.
All right, so.
So maybe, I mean, that should come, that'll come right out of the census. That won't be much of a problem.
Right, and I think they've already done that.
Okay.
Well, we've already asked them to do it, whether they've actually already done it. That's the part that I'm confused about this request is that we've already asked for the updates for specific chapters.
I think some of the issue is that is that Vicki has decided she doesn't want to work with us.
Right.
Doesn't care for the forest that much, and we don't care that much for her, so she just doesn't want.
And the graphics are different, like this is just out of an Excel spreadsheet, that's all that is. Same with this. So, I mean, updating those, you update the Excel spreadsheet and read the graph, and it just takes care of it.
Right, maps are a different thing.
Right, maybe that's what we should be looking at is maps. Uh, cause that's really what this gal is doing. So these are all just Excel spreadsheets. Yeah, they'll have that, I mean, that's nothing. Okay, so that one's, I think he's not so bad, there's nothing there.
So are they, we've asked them to update these chapters, are they going to update the body or just the charts?
Just the charts.
Okay, so then when they're done that, we have to go through and update the body to make the body information match with the charts say.
There probably weren't any maps, although there was, the community facilities map, we did want that one updated.
And we had, they already know that. They gave us a price for it, remember, and I complained. They gave us a price for it, remember? And I complained about the price.
Is that the only one?
I believe so.
Well, there's an easy line to get to those, stay on the list. Recreation, open space. I should know if there's any there, but.
Yeah, there should be a map in there with the trails designated and such, right?
Not the old one.
I thought we.
Well, not in the old plan. I mean, at least in the old one, it's, I mean, it's, we just went through it.
Okay.
So maybe it could.
Well, but it depends what in the land use chapter, she says she's she's got the updated data on conservation lands. There must be a map. In the land use chapter that's really the same as open space. Right?
Right. And I think. That Ali says is, you know, do we want a trail map in the in the rec chapter?
Yes.
And so and Bill Knight could provide that for us, a very good one.
Right.
Yeah, we had to take the trail map down when they were having all of us about and offer us trails and so forth.
Right.
And so it hasn't been on the website for a long time. It would be really nice to put it back.
It would be.
Okay, so there's there's one we've got captured.
Has been years.
But we're not gonna ask them to do it.
No. We'll get that one from Bill.
Okay. Public roads and transportation, she says she's got that, she's got updated information on road data. So that's gotta be the road data, right?
Right, I mean, this map would not have changed very much. We would have added a couple of roads. You know, Baines Road might have ever added since this map was not, I don't even know really if it tells us it very much, but. It tells us a little bit, so it's okay.
Yeah, look and see if Baines is there.
I wish I could get this thing to zoom in. I don't, oh, there's, there's my zoom right here. Let's see, it's it's it's, come on, baby. Where would we be? We would be over here. It's so grainy, flat iron, there's Bonner, no. So Baines Road isn't there.
Okay, so we want to add Baines Road?
To the, and. So we go on the public roads map.
Okay.
Have there been any new scenic roads?
No, we haven't done a scenic road since Mogul Netman, you can see Mogul Net, he was tearing up the. Public um roads. Update, and she may, she probably gets that information from DOT. Because they ask us every year what we've added, because our 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 road money from the state depends on how many miles of road you have. Um and so that one, but we might get, we might get. So she might have good access to that.
What was the map above that? It was the same one? Yes, okay, never mind.
That was the same one.
Population.
Right, that's coming right out of.
Land you should have. Yeah, I confused the maps in the NRI with the maps with the. You know, probably the maps for the master plan.
So there are no maps in the land use chapter currently?
Right, now we could add a zoning map. From the, you know, we have a much better zoning map now than we used to have in the ordinance. I mean, that's that's a Vicky, that's a Vicky, um. Vicky Davis, Davis?
Yeah.
What's her name? Um land use, we'll add a zoning map. And she has that map, or this gal will have that map, because they they did that project for us. And we went through that. So we add that. Energy we just did, and do we want? Is that was one of those prime? Yeah, so we definitely want the soils map. I'm guessing it didn't change, right? It's geology.
Yeah, the only thing that that may happen with it, like the soils map, is that um the naming of it. Like map two, one, whatever, may not be correct. And then we had that problem with some others.
And it is possible with technology that they've. Made the map more interesting, more something. I mean, if if there's an updated soils map for Plainfield, we'd like it, whatever it is. I mean, we would expect it would look the same, that the prime soils would be in those places and and all of that. Do you think, does it have any value? That map right there. It gets very small when it's on a sheet of paper. What that map does show you at a point of time is is lock configurations in the town of Plainfield.
I think it would be so small, you couldn't. I don't think it'd be useful.
Right.
And we we effectively have that with the with the tax map.
Right, it's certainly somewhere in the land use chapter, there should be a link to to the tax maps, because the tax maps again are very good. Because of the of the GIS system that the Conservation Commission got started for us. Uh but now you can, you know, people, it's amazing. When residents come in now, we don't show, we don't give them a copy of their tax map. We show them on our computer how to go home and do it. And once they do that, all they wanna do is snoop around on their neighbors. Right? Because now you can see how, you can see the lots, but you can see it with visual references behind it, like you know where that field is. And all the line runs up the edge of the field or goes right through the middle of the field and whatever. And once people start, it's like YouTube forum. They just can't help it. They're they're they're, George Kohler used to send me. Letters just outlining all the things he had seen on our on our maps that he thought should be investigated further. Uh but people really, they they get excited when you can see their property lines on photos. And their neighbor's property on it's more important than theirs, or what they're, but you think too small, we'll we'll link it, we'll link it. Yeah, that's probably right. All right, now I have a response for her, so that's that's good. I think there, I mean, this won't take long now, this this is.
Well, I'm hoping not. Wrap this baby up.
Right, and if Angel Ella makes any more suggestions.
Bringing cookies to make up for it.
You did, I guess, I I'm gonna just go. These are not gluten free, is that?
They are not.
All right, no.
Well, the only. What do you wanna do on the seventeenth while we're here? What's our assignment for the seven, there's no hearings, that nobody's filed. Rollins has got a bunch of shit, but he never got filed.
Okay.
I mean, close to Thanksgiving, you couldn't give us a night off. Getting blows to Thanksgiving within within ten days or something.
When is the December meeting? I think I won't be here.
Why, it must be. Beth, let me check. It's all gonna go to hell, but it's daily savings time now too, so it's dark and right after lunch.
Are we likely?
December first.
Yeah, are we likely to get any information back from the commission before the seventeenth?
Which commission? Those guys or?
Well, and any of them to be able to work on another chapter. The Conservation Commission map, you won't get until, section, you won't get until the spring. Okay, so and then.
And how was?
Fine, but I mean, if if there's no hearings and we don't have information to work on another chapter.
Right, then there's no point meeting, but.
If we get any output, we got a couple, we got a week. Won't think we can get anything from regional planning, maybe they'll give us a.
Okay.
How was the NRI then? Did you got?
I my, I I had it on the calendar.
And I I did the same thing you did.
I totally.
I mean, you you did one of these, were you happy with what you saw?
Yeah, I think they're working hard on it and and uh having a having. Um people doing it who actually know what they're doing is a great plus. Um because the people that did the first one volunteered, but we were one of the first small towns for sure to do one. And we did it by the seat of our pants.
Wait, I remember, did you have some mice in your pocket?
Well, we did, we had.
Dave, how much is it gonna cost? The whole, I mean, I just got authorized, I sent the guy a check last week for seventy four hundred bucks. Is there another seventy four hundred coming?
Yeah, I think it's around fifteen or something.
So makes us feel better about Southern.
Yeah, right, right, I've I've been looking at my bank account.
Yeah, him and Kayway saved us a lot of money.
The 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 interesting thing about, from my perspective, is that.
What do you interrupt, what did you say, David?
I said, Mike and Kayway and Shelley saved us a lot of money.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, because that was the EG ju, the 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 whatever, E E just thing was going at that time, they had the big mapping machines, right?
Yeah, they had a whole, they had a whole uh. Computer lab with Esri software on it, which I don't think they ever used, because the guy that was gonna set up that program left.
He did leave.
He did leave, which is too bad. But uh out of the the uh chapters that we did in the NRI. The agriculture chapter by far got the most views, if you will.
Yep.
And and looks and looks for, because other people around the state, maybe. Maybe because Taylor was involved at some level, I don't know, but um it was interesting.
No, I mean, that. It was good work, and it is nice, I mean, it's, I mean. We went through a strange period with the CC, you know, Myra Ferguson had championed it for a while, and then they moved away and then things happened, and then COVID happened. And things, but we do have a really revitalized Conservation Commission. It's not just Megan Chapman, it's David Grove and a bunch of other folks. Who are, you know, going and in participating. And, you know, you got some old dogs, Bill Knight's still in there, you know, offered his insight and. Uh they just did some work with. I think it's Rybeck Linds, were doing a an an install that involved digging under a seasonal wetland area. And they ended up, you know, doing a minimum impact permit for that, but two years ago, we would have said, we don't know who to have you call. And and we knew just who to have them call this time, so kudos to you guys, Dave. I mean, it is really good.
Yeah, Megan is, it's good to have Megan. It's still, you know, it's not quite as vigorous as it. Seemed, uh Vicky hasn't been coming too much, but Jen Lance is is good to have. I just wanna make a comment too about, you know, the uh some of the overlap potential for between the Upper Valley Lake Centipede people. And our NRI people, um you know, as far as like the map of the conserved lands, you know, that's also something that I think we. Will be expecting in the NRI. And and maybe there's gonna be a few other maps. I I would expect that we're gonna. Be uh mapping agricultural soils. I don't know if it's gonna be a standalone map like this. I kinda hope that our maps, our maps that that they've shown us so far are a little bit complicated, and I. Kinda think simpler is better. Uh you know, if you wanna show agricultural sho- soils, show agricultural soils, but. But don't clutter the map up with a bunch of other stuff, you know, on the same map. But but I think I think I think I wanna alert somebody to the fact that there could be some overlapping effort. Um that that, uh I don't know if that's good or bad.
Ultimately, we ought to, if it, the the maps ought to be. Mostly the same, and it would be nice if we could just link them in both places. Um David, you're gonna do wetlands and stuff too, because we've done a lot of work in the planning board about uh our our water resources. And we don't have in the current iteration of the map for plan, a water resource map. Um and given how much we've worked on that.
Yeah, I would thi, I believe that's gonna be one of the maps that we're that they're producing. We. That was talked about right at that meeting you were at, right, Mike?
Yeah, probably. I'm I'm not, I'm not sure the map specifically was talked about, I don't remember that, but that doesn't mean it wasn't done.
Right, yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm. I'm 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 now the slacker on the Conservation Commission, so.
I don't think they'll fire you.
Yeah, I don't think.
No, no, they won't. She uh, yeah, they keep on saying, boy, I, you know, that institutional knowledge is something, but yeah.
The one, the one thing that was fun there. Was that they were talking, one of the guys was talking about this this really wonderful wetland area on Twelve A, right at the junction of. Of Old Valley Road. And I said, yeah, Pucker Pod Swamp. And they went, what, what? And they wrote it down.
Uh so anyway, I put a star, I made a note, I put a star next to it. Hopefully I'll remember to to pass that along. Um you know, uh water resources map for uh. For uh for your chapter.
Okay.
Says anything else you want to, we 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 can probably. Eventually add add to our list if there's other. Sort of natural resource related things that you that we can.
Well, I I guess it might be good if if you could ask them what maps they're gonna produce for you. So that we're not, you know, we're not telling Upper Valley to do something that they're already doing.
Right, yeah, we're, it's in a contract already. We'll we'll, I'll I'll get right after that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right.
All right, we're gonna have a meeting to adjourn. David, I'll see you at eight o'clock, bring donuts.
I I have a question, though. I have a que- question. Now, you all saw the article in the Valley News about the Classics Road uh uh.
Yeah.
And and in the weekend paper, and um so when, and I asked Jane last the weekend before, um when. When uh when did that, when did we uh shut down development on or building on Classics Road?
Nineteen eighty six.
Eighty six.
Eighty six.
And you know, with very few exceptions, I mean, there have been no new permitted residences on Classics Road. I wouldn't suggest that there hadn't been an apartment or two that has sprung up, uh that shouldn't have, but there's been no essentially, you know.
Right.
In nineteen eighty six, the selectman let anybody who wanted a permit come get one, because they sent everybody who owned land on Classics Road. And a bunch of people did, and Peedy Goodwin played most of those permits out, you know. Bought, you know, renewed them until he bought the land or bought the land, renewed them, and then built the houses. But there hasn't been since early nineteen nineties, there really has been no new houses. And, you know, that change, I, it's. The most upsetting to me change that they came up with out of the out of this legislature. I mean, because it doesn't, essentially takes the local optional act. You you you're not gonna do it, and yet they're not living here with us. They don't know our land.
Now they're getting a fair amount of pushback, so who knows what will happen in the next session.
We've got that one here, I haven't, we haven't looked.
Oh, yeah, no.
That that was one of the maps that we had too, showing the undivided land.
Where where can I find the discussion about, you know, why that zoning change was implemented? Is that is that something that took place in the selectmen's meeting?
Oh, yeah, no, in fact, if you um. Give me a day or two to 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 get some other things under control, but I think in one of my files, I have it. All of it, because we reworked that ordinance so many times, and it's been controversial a few times. You know, I mean, essentially, the genesis of it was. The planning board and Paul Franklin was the representative, the 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 planning board went to the selectman and said, there's too much going on here now. We want you to stop, you know, we we think we should not allow development on Classics. I mean, Peedy Goodwin was just cranking lots out, buying shit everywhere, and you guys were burying. And um and then the selectman held some hearings and voted. There's a, there's a particular meeting, I mean, that's all it was, it was a vote of the board of selectmen that they would not issue permits anymore. And we revamped it a couple of times as laws got tweaked, but essentially forever. In most towns, you could buy, you could, Cornish, you can get a building permit for a Classics Road, you just do what the new law says. You you have to go out and and say, I take all responsibility. The interesting little caveat, which they probably don't do in Cornish, because it wasn't in six seventy four forty one before. Apparently, you also have to prove to the selectman you can insure the building.
Yeah.
Which is a kind of an odd little piece, right? So you you have to get an insurance company to say, yeah, we'd insure a house out there. Uh and it's not a quote from Geico, it is, this is what it would cost, you know, and. And and so that's a little bit odd, but Cornish is, I mean. And, and so that's a little bit odd, but Cornish is, I mean, Plainfield is, I think, one of very few places in the state that has not allowed them at all. Um, and, but it's been a long time, and, you know, there are people. We won't get a ton of it at first, but over the years, over the decades, it will chew away into that layer.
So, are you saying though, that the selectmen, uh, that, that just was a, a call on the board?
Oh, absolutely, there's never been a vote at town meeting.
There was never a vote.
No, RSA six seventy-four forty-one gives the selectman that authority to, 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 to issue them an R.
Right, yeah, I, 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 I looked through, I flipped through like twenty-eight years of town.
Right, sent me an email, I'm saving that so you can watch football on Sunday.
It was a weekend, I was on the weekend, you know, I, I, I kinda like spoiled that weekend going blind, looking through old town reports.
Yeah, and you won't find it, town never voted on it. Thank you, David.
Nice to see everybody.
Thank you for coming.